Hand up the whole time.
You have a lot of that.
I do.
He is, he is, he's enjoying playing varsity baseball in the not grades, so he's wow.
Alright, I think we're going.
You got it live? Alright, so I appreciate patience to take a break there, I know it throws us a little bit, but I'm sure Paula, Paula's gonna want an extra 20 minutes to talk. So, we've got Paula P. and Human Resources that came in. We'd had a couple of conversations recently, kind of discussing both the current pay scale for employees, the way that the scale's set versus a lot of, a lot of different counties and other places come to pay ranges for positions versus the scale system. Along with kind of looking at the exempt versus non-exempt employees and workman's comp, or not workman's comp, sorry, or flex time versus comp time and several other things. So I had, I was just gonna ask her if she could kind of come and just chat about a direction that she's kind of brought before, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mo.
Alright, thank you. I actually done some research and it's helped in my opinion about the different types of pay scales and pay ranges. And currently what we have, I guess you'd call a step system is not like the range, and it moves up like it's got a start and end, and it moves up two and a half percent each time. And it really needs updating and so that everything will be consistent and, you know, they actually need updating pretty regularly. But I looked at a salary range after talking with Chris, and I gave y'all some notes, and I'll just kind of go over the things that I have discovered. I believe it would be more beneficial to be able to try that way, and I have seen different things. It's, it's good luck to have for job postings and things like that, because you give a minimum and a maximum, and it gives somebody an idea of what they're dealing with and might, you know, call out some applications that let them know if they're interested in the job or not. But pretty much a salary range provides a minimum and a maximum for a given job, and it allows for consistency in pay based on education, experience, and performance. And I think that's really important. It's anything in pay and anything from an HR standpoint with policies or anything is , is we consistent with all employees. And I feel like that would help, and it would, it offers flexibility based on the level of education and performance and different things I've seen, you know, really opened me up. It helps your budgeting because all employees can be put into a different group. What you would do, you would group all employees according to the skills requirements and education requirements, and then you would do separate pay grades and pay ranges for different sets of employees for the overall scale or the overall range. And it, it would help with competitiveness with other entities, you know, we could look and as far as, we can look at other counties or cities around our same population or, or neighboring counties, because I know a lot of them, like Cherokee County is a lot bigger than us, but unfortunately we, but we are, they are the competition as far as training and, you know, offering more pay for people. And it would, and we could look at like the DCA has a website that where surveys are done every year in HR departments, and we could, you know, compare salaries there. And it, the benefits of it is rather than a fixed dollar amount representing pay for a job, most companies create pay ranges for different jobs, I kind of already touched on that, and pay grades, I touched on that. And I think you kind of do within a range, minimum, maximum, and a lot of times you can set, set a midpoint or at the market level and kind of do the start and pay in between that, somewhere in there. And which could be a hiring ranges, I've got on here, most companies establish a range for hiring. And it helps with pay compression, and I think that's one thing that we need to look at overall since our pay scale is kind of out of date. And pay compression happens when the market, you know, wants, there are a certain job, there's more of a demand for a certain job, and the, you have to be more competitive with your salary range, and sometimes new employees, you might have to hire them in, you know, add or more than what current employees are making, and that creates pay compression. And so a salary range can help you with that, and, but I believe to fix that, we're actually gonna have to, you know, get together and maybe a committee, I don't know, whatever, Chris thinks we've discussed that a little bit, you know, and, you know, over, overhaul our whole pay system. But I, I recommend going to a range, I think it's a good idea.
You know, we had a study, I can't remember how many years ago it was, and what we found from that study was, it was just unaffordable what it came in and said. So are you thinking that we need to have a more current study done from an outside source?
Well, I talked with Chris, and I'm not sure, we can look into it, but we still have the information from that study, and that would help us if we could get a few heads together, and it would help us because they've already got their employees grouped, but we would have to do probably look at current data for salaries and things like that.
One of the things when, when Po and I had talked a little bit was, if you implement and shift to a range, you're not necessarily changing all of the rates that you currently have, you're building your range scales based on what you have. So if you have a first-year employee working in one category and a 10-year employee working in one category, and you see that we currently have a, an $8,000 difference in their pay, well, that kind of establishes some of your range already right off the bat without going and saying we're gonna change what our budget for, for salary is and changing people's pay. But to get it established and started, we can take where we currently are and then create these ranges. And so as we've been posting, you know, we just recently posted the finance director position, but in researching for that and then looking where all the other counties, the vast majority of them have a pay range schedule. And so the calls that we've gotten for the position say, well, what is your pay range for, for this position? So they're looking for that minimum, maximum. So you're not locking yourself in to saying this position pays X number of dollars, but you're saying that it's within this range, and then it's based on your, your education experience. And the other part was, you know, we, we've talked about the performance side as we implement performance evaluations in each department, then rather than just having a flat, everybody gets X percent, but you have so much for an X percent for cost of living, but then performance be where the other portion would be, be able to be calculated, because that's factored in when you do a pay range, that you're, you're not just automatically guaranteed X dollars just because you breathe. But you, you actually are...
Me and Becky have been...
Yeah. So, but that, I think in, in talking was not necessarily changing what our budget currently is for, I mean, we, I know that when the original study came out, it showed that we were, in order to implement it, we were so many steps beyond where we would have to get, but this would give us a range to where we then could start to, to build into it, and not, not create a significant disparities to where, you know, your water department, your road departments are comparable versus, but then, you know, whoever works in those departments that can operate certain equipment or have certain licenses, then they're gonna move higher up in that range, so.
I had a question on that, I'm glad you said that. Does that mean if we implement that, then the two and a half percent goes away each year?
I would think, to, to me, this gives you more flexibility, like he was talking about, if you wanna do for performance, you're not tied to a, a step system that's two and a half percent.
Automatically lots of...
Yeah, you can do less or more, you know.
Well, you could do a dollar amount for certain, so instead of saying two and a half percent, it could be X dollars, and it still fit within that range so that you're not...
So you, if you do that and you're doing it by merit, so to speak, at times, flexibility is merit, then, okay, you would use those factors and still do a percentage year, is that, because I was curious about, Donnie recently did the longevity increases, and I was wondering, does that mean that we still do the five percent for them, or do we take that away? That, I was curious.
I'm guessing that would be, I guess, at budget time is, and working with...
I think if we put something like this in place, it gives us the ability to create policies within, within employees that we can put it in, into place with, but to where we can create the policy that shows that we, on an annual basis, can take a look at what cost of living would be. I do believe that if we can make it consistent, department to department, to where it's across the board, instead of some years where you're trying to get into where things are balancing back out, and so one department might get two and a half, one might get five, and one, because that changes your, that changes your entry level pays, a lot of times it changes some that's based on top of it, and then you've got your entry level people making the same as your five-year, but, I mean, so doing this, if we have a range per position, then, then we've got, and we can set it during the budget season at the very beginning that says, you know, we're gonna look at countywide, this is, this is the direction we wanna go in terms of X percent for cost of living, X percent for, for performance based on performance evaluations if you scored, you know, so much or higher, so.
Okay, I'm confused. Okay, so would we, would we still do most of this at salary time? That's when we, and then that's when we could either do the percent, like, okay, I see what you're saying, because in the past, we've had some people at five percent, some at two and a half.
And it goes back and forth per department.
Yeah, so if we, if we ended up with that being the same for every department, just a cost of living, then when would the, and I keep calling it merit, I'm not sure if that's what you call...
Performance.
Yeah, I think performance. Would that come into play with, at the budget time, or would it be like you could evaluate somebody on a six month...
I think it would have to be at budget time though, otherwise you're not prepared for it for the upcoming year. If you didn't do it during budget time, then you wouldn't, so that would just have to be the time when all of those would be due, so that we would have that information, and it would be, you know, department heads responsible for providing the performance evaluations for all the people within their department, and then, and, and this is a hypothetical, this wouldn't, this, I'm just 100% hypothetically speaking, but if we established as the, the board that we were gonna do an across-the-board cost of living at two percent, however, there was the additional, an additional up to two percent could be based on your performance, then some people would get four percent, but then if you scored well on performance, you wouldn't, you would just get the standard two, and so it would, it would encourage people, incentivize people to, to, to earn higher performance evaluations, and I think that's, but we've got to start the evaluation process before, because right now we don't currently have performance evaluations that are being done in every department, so we're trying to get that up and running to where we do start seeing, here's how, and then we've got to train, I think the most important part with the performance evaluation is training your supervisors on how to do it, that this, this isn't a time for personal, or it's, it's actually, there's, there's a solid metric that says it's based on your performance and your attendance and all these, so that it doesn't become a personal thing, and then set that score. And as long as people are above a certain mark, then they would qualify for, for, for a performance increase, and then have a, a fixed amount that would be just standard cost of living, so.
Yeah.
It would be, that would give us more flexibility, but, because right now, if we just say, by department, your department's gonna get five percent, or, or two and a half percent, or whatever the percentage may be, then regardless of who's working their tail off and staying late and doing whatever versus who's, you know, had an issue, they're all gonna get the same, the same thing, so it gives us a little bit...
I understand that, that's a good idea, and especially along with that, then you're getting that range put in there also for anything you advertise, and are you putting the range in the existing positions?
We would, we would, I mean, right now we haven't, we're still under that scale, but I think if we took our existing positions to where our salaries were, and then established our ranges based off of kind of where we're currently at, then we'd build off that in the future, so that, and there's, usually when you look at, and when I looked at Cherokee recently on, on one position that they had posted and advertised, the range was, was fairly significant in terms of per position, so you had a, I think it was $20,000 difference between the minimum and the maximum, but somebody over the course of 30 years could, could end up continuing to earn up to that point, so you establish those ranges, and then the midpoints, you know, the, the median averages is typically where you're, you're trying to show comparable to where that's, that's the market set pay for a position. So it's, it, we're early in the process of trying to establish what, I think we've just had a, a couple of conversations about it, trying to see, because it is a, it's a shift from an antiquated, and it, that, what we currently have, the step system, came out of the old federal employees' step system, they kind of passed down, and it's, it's based on those percentages that, that go, and so you'd have an employee that's categorized as, you know, 21C, within each time they're trying to bump, they're supposed to be moving up steps like it's a step on a ladder, and it, it, it creates kind of a, that would be more of merit just because you physically show up versus performance, where you actually have to earn whatever, whatever increases.
You know, you said that it would have to be done at budget time, but when we get the employee action forms that show people that are hired, quit, and if they went from this to this, we get a lot of those that say merit, and then they'll go from like $60,000 to $62,000 or $3,000 annually, then would they not be coming through the year, it would just be one time at budget, or?
So for establishing a raise, I think that we just recently had one in the road department that it was because it was, he, he was categorized over multiple shifts, but he was still being paid as just a shift supervisor versus the, the number two, so it was a correction on, on one individual. Some other offices that, that weren't within their budget for their personnel, and the sheriff's office being one of them, establishes their own because they're in a separate office, but they have to have the overall budget that allows that, I mean, they still have to fall within budget in personnel, but then once we've allocated the funds, or once we've approved the budget for the funds, they have the ability to do and shift and move, so we don't have the control on that one that we would on our department, so I mean, the, if that makes sense.
And also the tax commissioner, we probably have...
He, as long as, he, once, once we've established that budget, then he has the flexibility within his budget to, to work within it.
So we would do this at budget time, do a percent, and then do something based on performance, but still during the year, if they had it in their budget, they could individually, each department could give merit...
Within their budget. Now, and then departments are a little bit different than other elected offices, because as a department, they fall directly under, under the board, so we would be the ones that would be establishing when that was done, but I think it would have to fit within your budget category. For instance, if they had a, a budget, and I'm going into another hypothetical, so I'm trying to make up a department to, I'm afraid to use a real department, because then it's gonna be, half the recording will come out that we've made this change, but let's say we had our, our floor cleaning department, and you had budgeted for three positions, but you realize that, okay, if we've got two really hard workers, we don't need all three, so you pull that one position and split to, to bump the other two in the range up, then it would be within that department's budget that they're still can, continually staying under, but at the same time, it, it's making a change mid-year, so I don't think it'll eliminate those mid-year changes from time to time, but I think it'll reduce them significantly if it's done at that one particular time of the year. And I think this, as you gather more from, from other, other counties and that, that work with the range system, will, will kind of establish the, what their policies are and how it's done, so that we make sure that we're good, and I know we're, we're early.
I like, I like what you, you two have come up with, stories of the range, I think that's good, I think doing it at one time and eliminating as much of that as possible's good, so, I mean...
We even plan. That's the, if it's changing mid-year, you're, you're constantly going, poor Miss Fable just walked in the back, sitting there trying to figure out, well, how'd these numbers just change, we had a budget, so. It eliminates that from, from happening, and gives us that, that scale.
Good, good work on that, I think.
And then I know you had, the second page kind of covered a little bit, just kind of, and this is more of a, an educational thing that I think we've just gotta firm up the way it's written in our, in our policies and establishing which positions are what, so if you wanna go through your second.
Chris had asked me to talk about, I guess, employee classifications, non-exempt versus exempt employees, and non-exempt employees, of course, is somebody who is not exempt from the fair labor standards at overtime rules. And an exempt employee gets actually exempt from the overtime rules and can work as many hours in a pay period, either a work period, without, you don't have to pay on overtime. And comp's every time should only be used for non-exempt employees, and I don't know, kind of the culture of the county is a little bit different, I guess you might say, and say, an exempt employee might have a bunch of extra time they had worked in the past, have called it comp time, and took it off at a different time, but we would like to look at maybe putting a flex time policy, and, which would mean hour for hour, if, if that's feasible, like if an exempt employee is, has, say, has to work 20 hours over one week for some reason, they don't get overtime pay, but they could maybe flex that time to the next week and take some time off or something like that, is that what you had?
And, and I think it's just to establish consistency, and, and to show the breakdown, because I don't know that we've consistently shown who was exempt versus who was non-exempt, but under the FLSA plan, it shows who qualifies to get time and a half as comp time or overtime when they're going out versus exempt employees that are straight time, that, that are exempt from getting that. And I think that just in the record-keeping, that what we're wanting to do is just establish a consistent policy that says if you are an exempt employee, when you turn in your, your sheets, that way we keep a bank that we see where those hours are, are logged, then, then you can adjust and take within, within your pay periods. And the number of exempt employees...
It's not real high, it's, it's mostly department heads, and there's a few assistant department heads or, or office managers.
Right, and it's just to get a clear, consistent, and it, it becomes more of an issue at, at a time when if somebody were leaving and they said that I had 200 hours of comp time that's in banked up, that you're supposed to be paying before when they were an exempt employee the whole time, by the FL, FLSA standards, we're not, we're not supposed to, but I don't think we've had a clear where everybody's been on the same, same page, so it's just in your classification as an employee.
If there's not that many exempt, which is department heads and a few others, would it not be easier to maybe increase pay there or something, and just say no overtime? Does that make sense?
Right, well, for exempt, it's, it's the way that they're, they're typically by those positions, that's one of the things that's there, is that it's, it's for the position, it's not based on an overtime. And, and I think most people understand that, I just don't think there's ever been a clear cut, and, and we've gotta be careful to make sure we're following what federal law says, that we're not going against an hourly, and I think when, when we say exempt versus non-exempt, typically it's your hourly versus salary, your salary is typically gonna be your exempt employees that, that are not supposed to get comp, they're paid a flat salary for the job, not for, for the hours worked, and then your hourly employees that, that are then building their hours to either comp or overtime, so it, it really is just taking what's in the FLSA policies in their law, and then putting it into just a clear-cut policy that, that makes it to where it's understood, and that the employees then understand if they are exempt versus not exempt, because I think there's been some confusion. It's, it's not really making a big change, it's just formalizing it to where we make sure we're doing it the same way in every case consistently, that, that we don't, you know, and, and that we, we find a system that, that we know that is monitoring, you know, when, when we do, if you have an exempt employee that all of a sudden comes in and says, I've got 80 hours of, of flex time to, to kind of rotate, because I've been working over a whole lot, where's that documented? Where are we, where are we seeing it, and are you just, is this just a random number? I mean, it's, it's easy to, to, to let that get out of control if we don't have it clearly in policy, and I don't think we're basing this off any specific example where it's gone wrong, is to prevent it from going wrong in the future, so that we, we don't get in that situation.
Do we have, as far as you know, every department on four days a week now?
Not every department, no.
Which ones are not?
Probably easier to say which ones are.
Okay.
I know the road department's doing four days, is the water still four days, I think? And then the finance, and some of us here at the admin doing it as long as I'm aware of.
So the rest are... So I was thinking, if, if a lot of the exempt employees are on four days a week, and I know you, Lisa, for example, you're here late a lot, like Lisa, what are you doing there?
Usually she's late, she's in there asleep, don't let her fool you.
I try, Jerry, I try.
Yes, my point is, if they're four days, and then they have, you know, they come early, they stay late because of that, that would probably, there would probably not be a lot of overtime for that group, am I right, or not? Or does that make...
Now, I don't think we've really had a ton of specific overtime, in your field work, I mean, your, your work, your road crew and your, your water crews, where most of your overtime is coming from, from, from out in the field, and, and they're consistently, because for water main breaks, a water main breaks, it's, there's no, there's no way to plan for that, but I think when you get within the office, the department heads in most of your, are doing a good job to make sure that they're, they're monitoring that their employees are, are consistently working their, their standard number of hours per week.
I was thinking about the road crew, you're right, that would create, and there's several positions that would create overtime, you just can't...
You can't, I mean, in public safety, I know it's got a separate, FLSA actually has a separate category for public safety because of, of the way that their shifts work and the way that their overtime works, so it's, they're their own unique animals, when we're looking at fire and EMS and number one, they've got kind of their own, own system for when they're having to, to cover theirs. And this, this just kind of shows a clear breakdown classification of who accumulates hours versus who doesn't accumulate hours, and it's based off federal law, it's not based off of, of just an internal policy, it's just to make sure we, we make our policy match it, and that we're, we're consistent in how it's done, so that it's not a, you know...
And so we would be implementing flex time, just a different term than what we've used?
Yeah, the flex is straight hour for hour, so if you, if you work, like Lisa, for instance, and she's sitting right here, if she worked five hours over under flex time, then she just adjusts five hours off a different day, but if it was under comp time, technically that would be seven and a half hours that she would be able to do if she was a non-exempt employee, so it's, it, it just shifts the, what you accumulate, if you're an exempt employee, you're accumulating straight time to adjust in, in, in how that's monitored versus comp time, which is time and a half. And it's, it's making our terms match what the federal law terms fit is the, the biggest thing, I don't think it's a major, major shift.
And I guess the benefit of a non-exempt employee being able to do those, because we do keep up with vacations and all that, even for exempt employees, so.
Okay.
It keeps it, and it's just more of a, getting it organized and tracked, I think the bigger thing that, that's gonna take a lot more planning and, and preparations, just when we, we're talking about the first half, where we were looking at, and looking at the range to, to see how we can make that match, and if we can make it match with what we currently have in comparison to what that one study was, then if not, then what would it take stepwise, and how many years would it take us to get there, so that we can kind of put that in place.
And you were saying you needed a committee to look at it or something?
Well, Chris and I discussed maybe, you know, when you get more minds together and maybe different opinions from some of the other departments, it helps to, you know, unite people together more too, and then you get better ideas, but you don't wanna get too many, but you know, we might...
You can boil it down with, with too many, but if we had, if we had, you know, four or five people that could kind of come and represent different departments, then they can take a look at, at, okay, here's comparatively, here's what the study showed, here's where we currently are, here's where we, we would like to see that range set up at, and then just to, to sit down and get the, the framework in place for it, not, not overcomplicate it and not, not make a mid, mid-year budget change, but, because we wanna keep it where we currently have it, but set those ranges based off where we currently are, and then that just shifts us away from the, the old skill, the old step skill.
And if I might go back to the exemptions, all of the job descriptions we have on place because if they're FLA status, but him and I have been working the last few weeks on trying to get all those updated, and we're gonna, we've been working with the department heads and stuff, and, because there's like 130 of them, so it's taking a little while, but, and then once we get everything updated, we're gonna, you know, get those back out and make sure, you know, they got, they love that, we'll give them.
And if we can just get a report for the board when we have our next meeting, that way everybody kind of sees where we stand as far as who's exempt versus non-exempt, so that that gives you a little better picture as to what that looks like, and so it, it makes sense. It's, it's easy to kind of talk about it figuratively and say department, but there are a few, a few others, so that way we will be able to look at it on paper. Alright. All right. You good, Ms. Tom?
I'm good. I did want to bring up one thing about the emergency basically that y'all extended until the end of March and that's set to expire March 31st. And I can say that, you know, the numbers aren't coming down and we have actually come down within the county. So that might be something y'all want to think about. Are y'all just going to let that expire?
We know we've got our work session right after. I don't see. We haven't had anybody take that emergency suit in the last month.
The last two pay periods, I think.
Have they been in the last?
Yeah, I think Rena's still.
Curly, she's curly.
Is she still out? Okay. So we currently have.
But since January, just for a member, there's been 53 people that didn't utilize.
Wow.
January, February, it was.
There was one week I worked at home and I was yelling one less.
Did you see there was one that's still, he wants to see.
Part two, like I mentioned.
Two, apparently, Mr. Stacey.
But we got now in summer, so in March.
Yeah, next week will be the end of March. So our work session will be next Thursday on April 1st. It falls on the 1st this time instead of later into it. So it would expire on Wednesday. So if we were going to renew it, we would need to renew it during the work session. The numbers I'm seeing, I mean, I've heard them talk about the potential for a possible summer spike. And I don't know if that's because of vacations and people getting back out. I don't know what their prediction is for another spike. I don't think they're predicting anything like what we experienced after the Christmas spike from just sitting in on the meetings. I mean, I know that they're being cautious and trying to alert people not to let your guard down to allow that you get back out there and get crazy. But the number of vaccinations are increasing versus.
Could we re-implement it if we, if we see?
If it came back and a month later, would we be able to just re?
I guess y'all could do.
We'd just start it fresh again so we could let it expire and then if we realized it was a problem.
And from the ones where we actually done this, I've done, sent out an email to, on my list, certain different counties. And there were several of them that were doing it through March 31st. But if you wanted, I could, you know, see if people existed or whatever. But I can say that it significantly went down as far as people turning in paperwork.
I would just look at it expire for a while.
I don't see any reason to do it, which it does require action from us. If we're letting it expire, it's just following the original terms that were set. So and then if you see a spike, then let us know as soon as the spike's starting to come back so that we can start one back up if we needed to. But if we're dwindling, then I think that's a good sign of.
Yes, a good sign.
Moving past. So, okay. All right. Anything else?
That's pretty much all I have on the subjects that you want me to talk about. I know you're working a bill and these videos and thoughts and that base.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Tom.
Good job. Thank you.
Ms. Fay, we're in a few minutes behind schedule, but we're not too far off.
It's okay.
Let you streamline us back in.
I'm an onlooker back here.
Do you want any break?
Good try.
That's why we were running late. We took a break after the fall started. So it kind of threw us off about 10 minute window. We were dead on time for the first two segments. And then that one break threw us off. I didn't think to factor that into our schedule.
We have some SLOST information. Y'all want to look at that first?
Yes.
That's a bigger spreadsheet. It has all the numbers that y'all get every, when we do the distributions every month. But that's just one that, I had that spreadsheet for the entire 72 months of the 2014 SLOST and the one for the 2020. So of course, August of 2020 was our first distribution, which we were in there for July. July 1st, that's when the new SLOST started. And then there's a full six months. The one for January 31st would have been for December. So for that, if you look down here, the 2020 average, it's for those first six months. And it's averaging 576,000 a month. And when you take the total that we projected, the 37 million, and divide it by 72 months, the average is 514,000. So right now, we're about 10% over what we projected. But since it is a six year, it goes on the collection time, not on the projected amount. So we'll get to collect it out for the entire period. And of course, the 2021 average is only that one month. So for the 514,000, it was down just a little. And then on the back, it shows from this SLOST resolution, the total of how it's distributed for each county department and for the cities, the county and the cities.
And you're feeling right now, we're currently averaging 10%. If it stayed on trend, then we would be 10% higher than what this.
We based, we based a lot of the projections of the 2020 on the actual collections for the 2014 SLOST. And it was, it was under what was projected. We didn't collect quite the 30 million in that period of time because there were some tough years there.
The first half of that SLOST was not an ideal season.
But right now, the trend is it seems to be increasing. It was up about 10% last year overall. And I didn't know, did y'all want to talk about projects or anything?
So I think one of the things that we'd asked a few questions and was, we've touched on it a time or two, talking about the potential upcoming, I know I'm going to call it wrong, American Rescue Plan Act, that we don't know specifics on, but we do have some basic guidance. Back to the guide that we had on there. It was just a kind of more of a pre-planning so that we don't go crazy if we start to get it and then kind of get your feelings on. If we get what they say that's projected that we could possibly get coming to the county, then if we use it certain ways, what can that do for us as a county? I know you and I had a little bit of a conversations. I didn't know if you might, if you could go over that just a little bit.
Okay. And that really brings the TAN into play. So I have the, that schedule that I do, the cash flow deficits. I've done that for this year. And it looks like our highest deficit will be probably in September, about 3.6 million. So if, my suggestion would be if we want to advertise for a TAN, that we should advertise it as a lot of credit to drop down. And that's what we've gotten the past few years. We don't get a lump sum. We just use it as we, or drop down as we need it. And probably put it at 4 million, just in case. The, just the little bit of information that we've gotten so far on the stimulus, the second stimulus money, is the county should get about 6.3 million. They said we should get half of that within 60 days, which we mean in May. And I was talking with Chris, if we can, if we can use it. Right now, that's kind of what's up in the air is how restricted it's going to be. And I don't think it's as restrictive as last year's money that we got from the state. The CARES money was, but we could possibly, if we could use it for, like our basic budget and operations now, set aside part of it for additional stuff. If you want to help out some programs or something, there's some guidelines on doing that, some community things. But actually, it could go a long way to eliminate the TAN.
So if we took 2 million of the 3.1, and then when we get the second part, took another 2 million, that would leave us a little over a million for other projects. And then we would have it eliminated in two years.
In two years, hopefully.
Is that what you?
Yes, it hold the budgets. But my suggestion is, I mean, the people who are dealing with this daily in public safety, I think they probably do need something. Last year, we did it in the form of, what it was called?
$2,000?
It was a.
Hazard, hazard?
Yes, it was hazard pay.
Pay.
And but do it like that instead of, if you do something that's going to be an ongoing increase in the budget, then.
Two years later, you're stuck with whatever.
Two years later, you're stuck with a millar drain increase, basically. And I don't think you'll want to do that.
And we did that with the Sheriff's Department and Slone's guys.
911. 911 in publics, yeah, the publics.
Off public safety, yeah.
It was for the Sheriff's Office, I think it was school resource officers and the investigators and the.
I think it ended up everybody except the admin staff there. And I think over in the fire, it was similar that there were a couple of admin that it wasn't, but everybody else it applied to.
On full time.
And I think that there's 100%, if we could have that TAN completely gone in a two-year window would be rather phenomenal. Because if we could pull, you know, two or 2.5 even, depending on what we could pull from this first year to apply in that direction. Where that drawdown to where we don't draw, then by the time we reach the end of the year, we may be in a better place fiscally based on new development, growth and other things that may be happening over the course of the year. So we may even be closer after one year of not having to have as much. But then definitely into the second year. The only part with the verbiage on when they said those checks were coming that I caught was that the first payment should be within 60 days. Second payment would be no earlier than one year from that day. So they don't give you the window of when that second one's going to come. So if we're going to bank on what we want to try to do, that first half's where you kind of bank, I think, on being solid on your plan. Because it could be December 30th before they get us the second one into the end of the next year. So I mean, it could push us on into the third year as to how. Because they left that pretty vague in how they phrased it. ACCG sent out an email saying, and this was last week, that within two weeks, we should receive much more detailed guidance into where it can go and where it can't go. And so once we get that, we'll have a better idea. And I know this is a preemptive to have this conversation early. I can look, I can see it on her face. She's like, I really don't want to talk about this right now because everybody's going to start raising their hands saying, I want this money. But I think that since we are getting together to actually have a conversation about it, it's a better, in this environment, we can just talk about it, not lock in a plan. But I think in listening to the way that she's presented it, to have the possibility of being away from having to borrow that tax anticipation note each year would be significant.
And I was telling Chris, we were talking about it on Friday afternoon. At the end of 2020, we had a cash balance of a little over 6, about 6.2 million. And that's the most that we've had in a while. So, and that was with paying back the 4.5 million. So if we had not had to pay that TAN loan, we would have had our 30% to cash flow through the county through the year. So in two years, I think we really can do that.
I think it's just managing it smart. But if we do, if we do look at a two-year window, then some of those capital outlet projects we were talking about would be realistic to repair and whether it's the heating and air systems and doing some of those things. I mean, I think those become very realistic without further debt. I mean, without having to borrow money to do them, we can actually do it with, without.
But hopefully, a lot of it can be, is for items that we've already budgeted. And as long as we keep, you know, the ongoing things in the budget, we can document it back.
And that's going to be the smart, I mean, that's going to be where we just have to call all the department and the elected officials and get everybody together to help them understand that this is our goal, ultimate number one goal is to eliminate TAN. Number two goal is to invest in caring for public safety that is in there. And then number three would be additional projects after that. So I think if everybody understands that upfront, because I'm sure that the moment that anybody started hearing the word 6.3 million dollars, everybody that has a budget has already started making their dream wish list. And, you know, it's kind of like buying a lottery ticket and you already have a spin before you ever realized you didn't win. So I think the sooner when we get that news that we collect and get all the elected officials and department heads together just to say, look, here's our priorities. And I think we've got to all be on the same page as to what those priority is at that same point so that we don't get crazy. Because they are, everybody's going to come, because everybody's got projects and every department, and they've all got a good argument as to why they need it. And so that's the hard part. But if we can sit and say, going back to your personal, if you've got credit card debt, you all of a sudden just got money, then are you going to pay off your credit card? Are you going to go out and spend it like a maniac? And I think we've just got to be smart on that. But this gives us a good window of opportunity that.
It really does, that we have a hand, you know, so this is great.
I think it's a really, really good, and it's just going to require being fiscally disciplined and encouraging all others to be fiscally disciplined in how we do it. I know when we were first talking, when we first started the meeting, we were talking about the board room and you had mentioned the funds on that. And I didn't know where the plans on that were originally or if that was something different.
Didn't you mention that we had the money to do that as far as getting that cabinet built for, you know, when we were talking?
Yeah, it'll come out of the general administration budget, so we can do that.
And is there enough in there to?
There's a couple of revenue items that came in that we have not budgeted. So I'll do a budget amendment in April to recognize those. And they'll go on the contingency line. So that'll increase the contingency to, I think, a little over 100 again. So, yeah, we'll have.
About that, okay. And that's what, we can, we'll put it out to get additional bids on that. And that way when we do meet in April, or maybe when we need to mail them, we'll actually have those numbers. But one of those two, we'll be able to compare it. Go for that, yeah? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions? So we're going to try to schedule a meeting about every two days between now and June 30th. Just so we can kind of make it come down.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Anderson, who's been walking around sweating, pacing, waiting on this all morning.
He's excited.
You know, I know a lot of times whenever somebody's looking at having a meeting like this, well, I've never had one before. But the good thing in this situation, none of us have. So it's a happy life on the street for the first time. So we're all kind of looking at it as just how to go. When I reached out to Kirk about coming in, we've had several conversations about a few different things when it comes to roads, whether it's the paving projects or if it's the maintenance or the repair. And I think the EXP engineers gave him a stroke the other day when they gave him a ranking list of all of our roads. So I think just having him be able to come and talk about the objectives for the rest of this year with roads, because those are going to be the questions you're going to get. And sometimes if you just have the answer, it's a whole lot better that you can say, here's our plan versus here's a phone number for you to call. Especially if it's my phone number. Mine's unlisted.
And when they go make Kirk, they get me.
We know where it was, so we can track that. But I'm going to let you just kind of explain a little bit about what you've got and possibly what direction for the remainder of the year we're trying to go.
Do you have any suppose that we can follow along?
This, this is what has been, this is our LME project. Pass that around. That has already been set. That is our subcontractor paving list. That's going to be the split paving. That's not the paving we do. And this was already set up whenever I come in. And these numbers that you see, this is. And these numbers that you see, this is just for materials, and this is something Johnny's got up. And we've got contractors lined up, they put these out to bid. It went in the paper last week, I saw. And hopefully, like I said, this is just, the numbers you see here are just materials, the cost of materials. And the contractor will be submitting bids, you know, over the coming weeks, and Johnny's gonna have the, their numbers as far as, you know, what the labor side of it will be for the year. Supposedly before your next board meeting. But these are the roads that we've got lined up to do this year. And like I said, this is contracted, this is gonna be the slip paving. As far as what we're doing ourselves, we're starting with Upper Salem, there behind the airport. We've got guys out, starting on the right of way this week, getting it ready. We're gonna pave it like from the airport end down to the bridge, or right before the bridge. And that's just the project that we're starting on. And, you know, where we go from there, you know, is still kind of up there, and you know, that's up discussion for all of us, you know, just, we'll do whatever y'all want us to, basically.
Can I ask you on the Shell Creek Road, does that start at the roundabout, like, towards Big Canal?
It actually starts, on the Shell Creek, it starts off fifty-three, going back toward Gibbs Garden, toward the county line, that way. I think you're saying it's the resurface, or right there at the gas station, going back toward the county line. And I think that's the entire, all the way to the county line if we're not in state.
As I understand it.
It's supposed to go through on that side. Now, the Old Mill White Road is, I checked on that yesterday, is actually coming from fifty-three up to the end of the pavement.
There's all this section, but it's.
That section, because it's got an open creek crossing that's on it, so it kind of messes up the potential for paving that middle section on it. Because I'd actually got a call about it yesterday and had to go to Johnny to ask him kind of where it was gonna stop.
East Price Creek, I'm trying to, Price Creek.
Sutton Road, Price Creek's over, either on Burn Mountain Road or off of Jones Mountain Road into East Price Creek. Goes through.
It's kind of north side of the county, northeast.
And is that the section that goes up in front of, okay, it goes to the end of the pavement, I see here where it's gonna go. Several of these are over on the west end. I really want to know, y'all been working up there on Sutton, getting the pipe?
Yeah, we got Sutton ready. They're currently working on Carver Mill Road, putting in a pipe there, where they already put in a pipe there. There was a, there was a patch that what didn't look right, it was trying to sink, so they're gonna dig that out and, you know, get it back. We're trying to fix everything that, you know, we see that's a problem before, you know, these guys come in, so we're gonna try to have everybody planning up.
Well, I've gotten several complimentary calls on you guys patching some of the spots in the road, but also on the edgings, where they're patching some of the edgings, the tire shredding spots on the edges, that people have been very impressed with the crews that have been out hitting those. And I know as soon as somebody watches this here, there's probably, for every two you do, there's two hundred that we don't know about or that haven't been called or we haven't made it to yet. But I think that just getting, even though they're band-aid fixes, but it makes the ride smoother going through there.
Well, we're trying to be, you know, motto right now is try to be more proactive, you know, if you see something, fix it, you know. If you cut a tree and you see that tree there next to it, you go ahead and get it, and, you know, try to be more proactive before the phone does ring.
And I think that that's came through to me. I don't know if y'all are getting the same kind of compliments or not, but I've heard it from several people that are very excited. And which, when you see the list of the road ranking, when you hear somebody bragging on the way we're taken care of, it makes you feel really good, because even though we've got quite a few that need work, there's a lot of work that's going on to do that.
And all the ratings, the data's a little mind-boggling, but I've looked through it, and I've rode some of these worst roads. And, I mean, I know these guys know their stuff, but, you know, it's not as bad as it looks. I mean.
So just to show you what he's looking at, in twenty twenty, there was a contract with EXP Road Engineers to do a road study, where they came out and inspected county maintained roads. Now, the dirt roads, I don't see listed on there, so it's the ones that were either tar gravelled or asphalt paved. And I know there's another official term for tar gravelled, but just for layman's turn. So they came and they tried to score and rank them, and it was basically like a seven.
I sense y'all had already seen that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I apologize. It's one of those things, it's hard to email to somebody, because if I send it, you probably lose your mind and say, this is, without the engineer to explain what you're seeing.
These are basically the same thing, and what I did, I kind of color coded them to make it simpler on the eyes. But that is the complete list of roads, and this one, I got it ranked kind of worst to first, and, you know, y'all can look, y'all.
In their chart, they explained where the problems are. So these roads are, like, he's got one that's ranked with all of Carver Mill's sections, but there's a, you know, there may be ten Carver Mills on your list, it's from different little.
Right, they did different segments that were only so long, so you might have, like I said, you might have, you know, you might have six sections on a road, depending on how long the road is.
And what is the, okay, explain the rating, like, one hundred is, means it's.
It's awesome, it's in perfect condition. And then if you have cracks, it took off so much. If you had a soft patch, it really needs to be dug out, it took off so many points. And like I said, the data itself is a little overwhelming.
When you look at the number below seventy, it's, there's a lot there. But in talking to them, crack sealing and some other general maintenance things, with just going through where there's cracks and sealing those would help. If you recalculated and you put in, once that was been, had been done, then that number goes up significantly, so.
I'm impressed with the number of one hundreds we have. I mean, we have a lot of.
At the full, I like the way you're looking at it. That's a glass half-full. I sorted it the opposite way, and I didn't even look in that category, and I feel bad now, I started on the other end going, oh my gosh. That's a positive outlook for, the Optimus Club may invite you for an employee of the year award. No, there are a lot that are in great shape.
Are they one hundreds, that's great. Oops, I saw fifty. Hampton Farm, I should know where that is.
Hampton Farm subdivision is off of, what's the road that runs up there?
Oh.
It's due a complete blank, but, is that off of Parker, right off Parker?
Yeah, right off Parker.
There's several that get in there on the low category.
Well, and it's, like I said, you know, if there's one, I think it's different stuff rates different ways, you know, like a crack may not be that bad if one section, you have one section that you've been, that needs to be dug out or something, it makes that pole just go away down. And, you know, I think moving forward, we need to look at, you know, where money's best spent, you know. The amount of people served versus, you know, how bad the road is, and, you know, places where we can, you know, patch and, you know, get it to a better, you know, maybe not perfect, but, you know, get it to a better score versus, you know, coming in and resurfacing the whole thing, because of just the astronomical price of, you know, resurfacing the whole thing.
What's this Hill City, Hill City Road, Hill City Road, Hill City Circle.
Right, if you look at the full spreadsheet, and this is just taking a few categories, so you can actually interpret, because it's, if you open it up, it's like A through double Z of all the different categories. So they took little sections of each road and ranked it just on that little section. So it may just be a one-mile part of Hill City Road, and then the next mile part, and then the next half-mile part, and they kind of split them up into different groupings, so that it wasn't just rating the entire road, it was rating a section of a road. So you may have some sections that were in bad shape because there were sinkholes or potholes or.
And, you know, the way they, I mean, it's just, the way I'm looking at it is a tool. I mean, we need to take this data, we need to go ride the roads, and, you know, we need to get together and, you know, discuss, you know, where, you know, where are we getting complaints, you know, where, you know, really what's the worst versus, you know, the number of people served and the amount of traffic. And it's like Big Ridge Road, I mean, I rode it the other day, it's got some pretty low ratings, and, you know, really, the road for where it's at, you know, is a real, you know, it's a decent road, there's not that many people out there. I'm not saying that the people that live out there are worth any less than anybody else, but, you know, the amount of money it costs to fix it versus the amount of people served, you know, we've got to balance that. And it's, you know, for where it's at, it's a really a good road.
Ain't none of them in Pickens County as bad as fifty-three.
Here's Jerusalem Church Road that got in the thirties, I thought we did a lot of paving.
Well, and I rode Jerusalem Church the other day, and I didn't think it was that bad. I must, you know, and that's what I'm saying, you know, we need to look at the numbers, you know, look at the road, and a lot of the stuff I think that they're looking at is technical, it's very technical. Is, you know, the way they look at it versus the layman riding the road, I think it's a little, you know, it's apples and oranges. I mean, what they're saying, yeah, it probably needs fixed, but, you know, but the average citizen riding down the road, it's, you know, it's a good road. I mean, I rode it the other day, it's in pretty good shape, you know, to my eyes, but, what am I, impressive?
That's a good tool.
Yeah, and that's it, I think, that's like I said, that's what we need to use it as a tool, you know, to kind of direct where we need to go and.
And then in that database they built, they built a kind of an interactive map that links to videos and some other things that we still haven't got all finalized as to what computers it's housed on. They were working with RIT guys to get it, where it was set up. But basically, you can open a map block that has dots on every one of these locations, and they're color-coded, red is below seventy, green is above seventy. And you can click, and then in the area that you click, you should be able to click the video or still pictures of seeing what it is they're talking about for that section. So then it really becomes a tool, because if you get a phone call that says it's about a certain section of the road, you can actually, without having to get in the car, you can get a first glance at it, right there on the spot, and that kind of gives you the direction again.
Do you need this, or have you got another?
I have to print one off, y'all want to keep those, or y'all might want to swap and look at them, or I can get you another.
I can overwhelm you like crazy before you'd email with the total list, and then you'll really be going, okay, now I see why they didn't print.
Well, and like I said, you open it up on the original database, it's like three screens going sideways of that data and what was it. I deleted all that, and like I said, cover-coded. Get it down where at least my brain can wrap around a little bit of it.
But I think one of the conversations that we had had, instead of trying to, I think a lot of times we try to hit as many miles as we can on trying to get new surface put on as many miles this year, if we focus on getting a little bit less on miles, but then getting back and trying to work on repairing as much as we can on the ones that are there. And not stopping the progress of moving forward, but spending a lot more time, effort, and energy on repairs, then you can go either off that list or just what we already know. And that's what y'all have already started with some of your patches, but if we're getting into repairing and sealing cracks, then we make and extend the life of the road for a few more years versus letting the water continue and settle.
And a lot of our dirt roads that are left now, I mean, a lot of the people that are on the dirt roads, you know, want them paved, you know, some people that are on the dirt roads don't want them paved. The long and short of it, the roads that are left that are not paved, there's a reason why they're not paved, you know, there's issues with the right of way, you know, they're narrow, they're, you know, they're steep, they're rocky. I mean, there's a lot of issues with the ones that are left, and there again, you know, we got to weigh, you know, how much we want to spend on fixing the road, you know, before we even pave it, versus, you know, what our money and time being better spent, you know, bringing some of these others back up, you know, up to a better grade of surface than, you know, what it's in already. There's, there again, it's just something we need to weigh, we need to discuss, and of course, I'm sure we'll get some public input on what we need to do.
A lot of times, the public don't understand or know the difference in the private road.
They think we do.
Private city, county, and state, I think that it's just, there's a road department, we're calling the road department, and I think that they, and understandably so.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, there's lots of, you know, there's lots of lines that, you know, I didn't, I had never even thought about until I took this job, but, I mean, you take out the city, you take out the county road, already that you take out the state roads, and, you know, there's places where, you know, this road starts in our county, and it goes into another county, comes back in over here, and, you know, you've got issues with that.
Yeah, I think there's a few different spots that qualify there. But I think just in moving forward, the more we're able to listen to what they're doing and start looking at which ones, and then as y'all are getting calls about areas that people are expressing concern about, that we make sure we're all taking a look. I will say that Kirk and Roger have both been, anytime I've called to say we've had a call about an area where there's drainage, or stopped up cove, or a road, a pothole issue, whatever it is, they've within no time had a crew out there. And I know this is pre-paving season, so they've had the availability to kind of move people around a little bit longer, we're about to be mowing and paving quite a bit more, starting.
Yeah, the mowers hit the road this week, so that's already begun.
Their focus will shift a little bit to moving toward that and kind of having it spread out a little bit.
Well, and I know I talk to Chris quite a bit, but my door's open to y'all too, anytime, you know, it's just a phone call away, I know people tend to call y'all as well.
I just need that private cell number.
It's unlisted, I'm sorry, I think it may have just, it's just broke actually.
We did, we did talk with Nathan just recently, you know, we were talking before we got started about the signs right now that are capturing the speed, the data for the speed limit. Right now, they're on Bentree Drive, and we'll be moving to Tate, when he does move it from there, there's South Station Street, I think is the name of the road. To look, it's the cut-through road where everybody's cutting through off fifty-three going into Tate, apparently that's turned, by the calls, it's turned into a drag strip. So we can actually get the data of what's going through there, and then I've already had a couple of calls as far as other locations, but if you guys will just, so that we're all on the same page, if you'll send it to my email or whatever, you can send it to Nathan and copy me, or send it to me, and I'll send it to Nathan, one of the two. That way, we're not, we know where it's going, and then when it gets that data together, like the Ventry data, we'll get that, we'll get that out to everybody showing the speeds. And we may get an engineer to review that, to look at that speed limit that's there, because currently it's twenty from Cove Road all the way to the gate, and I don't know that we've seen a car yet going twenty, I think there's nothing that's even.
I think they're averaging thirty-five, forty, but that's the average.
Yeah, so we may need to take a look at, does the first section need to be changed to thirty-five, and then drop it down before the hills, before you go up the curbs, or what the impact there, but it's hard to drive that at twenty. I mean, and when I say hard, you have to, when you make the turn on Cove, you just, you don't touch the accelerator at all, and you coast, and you still will get over twenty. I've tested it just to try to see how hard it is to hit that speed going through there. And if you just are coasting, you're going above that twenty mark on that long straightaway going in, so.
And I would say it probably needs to change right there about long twenty, third road, because I pull out there a lot, and there's not a lot of sight and distance, back toward Bentree from there.
Bring it back down to.
Yeah, and then, you know, after you drop off, you know, after you drop off there, you're going into the curves and all, so, you know, they don't really need to be going that fast through there.
And I don't know if it was originally set for consistency, because that's the speed limit once you go inside their gate in Bentree, if they just set it to match what was gonna be inside, because I don't, that's one of the only spots.
I never knew what the speed limit was there. I don't know if it was ever written posted, but I never knew.
Oh, the sign's right there, when you first turn on Cove, there's a sign, and I didn't catch it. Well, I did, because I raised the kids, learning how to drive, driving through there, and I'm making them drive the speed limit, which now I'm looking at it going, how did they hit that? But so I think that once we get that data, we'll have a better picture of kind of what that, I mean, obviously, there's some that are flying way too fast. If we get the engineer to review that, then we can get it sent, and there's a possibility we can get the new sign to be under, where they can send it to the state for radar certification, and then they'll actually be able to use that as a tool. And then they'll actually be able to use that as a tool for, for enforcing if they had to. But right now it's, it's not on the approved radar certification street. So.
Do you still get calls from that lady? She's so sweet. I think they were down there in that curve before you get to the bridge at Tate.
At Tate. I haven't in a while. I, I, I don't know if it's slowed down some. I doubt it's slowed down though. I mean, it's, that, that stretch of road through there is, is wide open. I think when the sign's up, it temporarily will slow them down for a week. And then they get used to it being there and, and they'll, they'll get back. So it works. I think the more we move it around, the more it kind of has an impact for a short period of time. But then if, if you leave it, people get used to it, then it, they, they kind of lose their impact for it. But we can definitely get it back out. All right. Do you have anything else, Mr. Anderson?
No, I think I mentioned, may have mentioned to you, we, uh, we ordered our solid refill the barn with. And that, that'll be a pretty high ticket item. It'll be in here in the next, um, few days probably. But it's one of those things that you've got to think ahead. If you wait till summertime, it's hard to get what they tell me. So.
And y'all, did y'all trade in the, the tractor?
We, uh.
That was a Splo stuff.
We made the deal on it. Uh, that is on some of the Splo stuff. It was based on last year. The actual tractor that we had specked out, they didn't have whenever we called to make the deal on it. Um, so it's going to be three or four weeks before it comes in. And of course we won't pay them until we take possession of it. But, um, it's going to be two or three weeks. And, and that, that was, we're going, that's, we're going to use the new tractor. We're going to hook it to the Bush Hog and put it to work. And then we're going to take one to others where we've kind of got a spare that way. If, if one does go down, last year we had an engine go down in one and was short of tractor about all season. And it really puts that behind. So, uh, we're going to put one of the older tractor or we're going to put the newer tractor on the road and, uh, take one of the older tractors, keep back for a spare. But that, uh, that deal's done. And like I said, it'll be in here in the next few weeks.
Okay. I just, I needed the initial paperwork came through. I just didn't know if we actually got it in.
No, we haven't had possession of it yet, but it, it's ordered and it'll be here in the next few weeks.
Well, good deal. Y'all have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Y'all, we're about five, six minutes ahead. So can y'all want to take just a quick stand and move around? Or y'all want to knock out the next one? Go ahead. He walked in just a minute ago.
There he is.
Where are you getting up here?
Come on up. We'll go ahead and get you done. Um, Karen is going to be picking up lunch and bringing it, uh, from Deb's. Bringing some sandwiches over. So we'll have, we'll have some sandwiches coming in.
Oh, you remind me of lunch.
Didn't capture. So Mr. Dan's here with Waterboard. I know he had provided me an update that he was giving to the Waterboard just on big projects that were over the next several years the other day. And so that's why.
This will be a note thing.
Show y'all that as well. Just to kind of keep y'all on the same page as, as what he's keeping the Waterboard up and up free zone. One big project that before these are even started, that is in the process of getting started now is the Jones Mountain. And that's, that's that joint Splo project we're working on with the city to, to get in. And so I will let you just take over.
Uh, first and foremost, thanks for having us. This is the first time I've been able to come up with a plan like this. But, uh, we'll, uh, get into that in a minute. But the biggest project to me right now is working with the city. It, it took several months of going back and forth and talking and planning and, uh, but we finally purchased all the material and waiting on, uh, I think we got about a week before the, uh, new meter and PRB are here. One of them's done, but they wanted to live on both at the same time, uh, because they're coming on a big truck. That way they don't have two different trips with a big truck, you know, because everybody's trying to save a fee here and there. So hopefully it'll be here sometime next week and we're going to start, we're going to start with those and put the new meter in down at Burnt Mountain and, uh, 136. We're actually moving the location of that up on Burnt Mountain, probably about a 600 foot because of the future DOT project going on there. And the PRB's going on, end up on Jones Mountain up there at the old landfill. The reason why we've got to have that is there's about a hundred and fifty pounds of pressure right there at the landfill. And coming down off that mountain right there, we can pick up to about 250 to 300 pounds. So we blow everything.
Doubles going down that one, correct?
Yeah. And, uh, that way we could try to push a little bit of water through Toppan Rock or maybe even over towards White's, I don't know. But once we get those in and then all, like I said, all the pipe and all the fittings and everything's been ordered, uh, the city's finishing up on a couple of projects. And so as soon as they get finished with those, we're going to start actually replacing that line from Jones Mountain to Burnt Mountain Road. We're going to put an eight inch line in. That way we can, uh, push more water to the city and plus get ready for the future development because we're know it's coming sometime or another over in that area. And that way we're ready for it. And we're looking at maybe about, hopefully about three to four months on completing that job with three crews, working on it. You know, no less than two at a time, but the most three. So that's the first big project that we got going this year. I've had to put one of these together. I've been needing to put one together for past couple of years, but I needed to put one together for a couple of other things. Uh, one of them being Jifa. It's the capital improvement project. And Jifa does a survey every so many years, probably municipalities, to see what kind of projects they got, you know, or want or need, uh, so they can get their funding for the states and whatnot. And this is just a list and I really hadn't put them in no particular order yet. I was actually going to sit down in the next couple of weeks with Chris and, uh, and Justin because he's a big part of the planning and the development of it, to see where we can, what we needed to start with. But my biggest thing with most of these is on the west end, and I know a lot of this is focused on the west end, but we only have one way of feeding water on the west end. And if we have a line leaking or something happening on Jerusalem or somewhere like that, we've got everybody out. We've got four, five, six hundred pick load of water because it only feeds one way. And with this first, uh, the first two, they go hand in hand. It's just two separate, I put it as two separate projects. It's going to let us get that loop, uh, in that two-way feed. That way it comes in off Moline and feeds down Hill City Road. And if something happens on Jerusalem, we can still feed water to the west end. And one of our biggest customers is Cherokee County. We, we always forget, you know, that we sell water to Cherokee County over on Jerusalem. But if we're out of water, they're out of water. So, you know, we try to keep, we want to try to keep everybody in water anyway. But them being our biggest festival, we need to try to work.
Do we get to sell it at the same rate that they sell it to us at?
No, unfortunately we don't. Uh, I wish it was that way. Uh, but, but it's not. And, uh, that might be something that needs to be worked on that way. But then really buying water from Calhoun is our lifeline. That's where 90% of our water comes from. And so it's been in the talks for the past couple of years with, uh, even back to my predecessor, uh, Mr. Coleman, that we needed a second connection to Calhoun. Pearl Johnson, that booster pump right there, it just worked. I mean, it runs 24 seconds. Something ever happens to it and we're down for two, three days, we lose two, three days worth of water. So we need to get that second connection to Calhoun. And they just had them finish at the mini gallon tank out past Charlie Long's on Pittman Road. Is that the one that's out past Charlie? I get on Pinion and Pittman mixed up down there. And I spoke back and forth with Calhoun and they're ready for us. It's just, you know, we've got to sit down and, and come up with a deal and find the funds because we've got to find the funds to actually run it a different route. That way we got two feeds going into our mini gallon tank.
How much will the Grandview, um, project have us as far as if we buy 90% now from Calhoun? How much will that change that picture when we finish the project?
Probably zero. And that sounds weird, but we don't pull no water. We don't take water from Calhoun, or the Calhoun water that we buy and take it to the east end. Everything we get from the east end is from the city of Jasper or Cherokee County. And that's another thing that we're wanting to work with Jasper is to take some of that Calhoun water so up to them at Hill City, pump it through town to get it to the west end. But by the time you do that, I mean, the cost and whatnot. So it's really not going to affect that 90% with Calhoun, uh, because it's on its focus, focusing on the east end. But it is going to let us, allow us to use less from Cherokee and, uh, and less from city of Jasper. Because 333,000 gallons a day, that's, that's a pretty good chunk of water. That's nine million, 10 million gallons a month. So that's the ultimate goal is to eliminate or slow down using, you know, with the Cherokee County. And even, even the city, which the city's going to purchase a good bit of that. I'm, I've got a good feeling, you know, they're going to swamp a lot of that.
What percent do we get, excuse me, from Cherokee?
Of our water.
Of our water.
And when I say it was 90%, that's just me. We probably get 15 to 20% from Cherokee. And it's, it's because Cherokee is our biggest supplier for the east end right now. We've been talking and trying to come up with some other, uh, deals. And, uh, but it's about, I won't say roughly 15 to 20% of our water, but that's because it supplies all of Tate and all of Marble Hill. So that, I mean, that's a pretty good, a pretty good chunk. And city's throwed in the mix in there, which we've got them turned down. I think we get 50 gallons a minute from them in drag and drive. And once we get all of our other little projects in place, we'll be able to up that at a cheaper rate and, and slow that Cherokee down too. I just had March 9th, I had the, our tri annual sanitary survey with the EPD. That's where our representative from the state comes out and we go to all our tanks and booster pumps. And she goes through all of our paperwork and audit, audit this and, and inspects our tanks. And right now they're not making it mandatory to paint and clean the tanks. But I foresee it coming in the future when we swap over to surface water because right now we're in groundwater. And by a year and a half to two years, we'll be converted to surface water since Grandview will be coming online. And we'll actually get folks that's coming straight out of Atlanta that do our inspections instead of Carter'sville. Groundwater's a little bit more lenient than surface water and rightfully so. I mean, there's more things that can happen with surface water. But I was just wanting to, I want a plan to get all of our tanks painted and all of them cleaned. And unfortunately we can't take our tanks out of service. Cause if we take the tanks out of service, somebody's out of water. Uh, it's just the way our system was designed and built. So there, there is companies out there that can run a robot and a camera down into the tank and inspect the inside of it and also clean it if needed. It's costly, but versus having to take a whole tank out of system, draining, you know, 500,000 gallons of water, you can leave it in service and they just go in from the top and, and do their thing. And I know all my projects are probably some of the most costless projects. Chris has done said that every time I walk in.
Most expensive human being.
I'm a needy department, but I do have a cause for every need that, that I do come across, uh, or, or want. But, uh, and that's what I was going to first say is I've probably got the biggest, biggest project budget. And, and, but this is over just, you know, a couple of years, not in one year, I hope. Another thing is to upgrade our line from county line in Calhoun or Gordon County up to our mini gallon tank. It's a six inch line, uh, which it, it served its purpose and, and when it was put in 30 years ago, 30 plus years ago. But now with the, the development that I see in the future coming, because just the past couple developments that's inquired about water out there, uh, I feel we need to increase that size of line, at least to a 10 inch, maybe, maybe even bigger. That way we can get more water going through our, to our mini gallon tank. And then, you know, we can disperse it out, you know, the way it goes now. It's just, we're restricted because of that six inch line. And we need to, we need to actually increase our volume coming out of Calhoun.
And that's something we could do in phases over.
Uh, you could, uh, but it'd probably cost you more in the long run to do it in phases since it's, and, and the pipe prices has went out, out of sight in the past six months. I've got pipe prices from last year and then six months later, that was $3 a foot higher. They're shipping all the resin across, you know, overseas. And so it's hard for our pipe suppliers and the pipe makers to make the pipe, you know, it, what they're competing with over there. So.
Do you have an approximate cost on this going from the six inch to the 10 inch?
I don't. Uh, I, I, I'm, and I go off of, I've, I've got all of it measured. And I go off a contractor's price because if we do these sized projects, other than the Hill City, but if we have to borrow money, we have to get it contracted out. And so a contractor's price is between 125 to 150 dollars a foot. And so when we get down to the bottom, I, I have, you know, estimated price for all these projects, not just one. It's all of them together. But it, it's hard to give a definite price. I could get my prices right now. And then six months or a quarter, they call them blocks, block down. It could go up a dollar and a half or it could come down a dollar and a half. I've done some finagling with the 136 project and saved us, what, $2 a foot? I think $2 a foot, but it was luckily they had that much pipe on the yard that they could get rid of. And, you know, I just had, I took it and I had to buy it that day, but I bought it. So, uh, but I could get a definite, you know, a definitive price for that particular job. It, it would be, that's going to be a pretty good job, about like the 136 job because it's a state highway and you have to stay 10 feet off the edge of the road or on the backside of the right of way. My next little project I'd like to see is upgrade our lines over around the Black Knob and Big Ridge area. Number one, and a lot of people, you know, they blame the ISO on the, the fire department or, or the water department. But anyway, but my biggest thing is, is, is I'm here to help the fire department to get that ISO rating down. You know, we want to keep it at that three and four, you know, whatever we can keep it at. And over here, it's, I think it's a little bit higher over here, you know, because of.
Scarcity.
Right. Uh, but there again, we go back to when this system was put in, it worked and it served its purpose for what was there. But now we're looking at several developments out there. And, uh, it just needs to be upgraded for our customers and our citizens, being the ones that's not on water. Because they can have that fire protection that, that the people in Marble Hill have or the people on Carter's Road or somewhere else. We have hydrants out on a newer part of the line out there, but you still don't get that, that flow and, and pressure that the, the fire department needs to be able to put out a fire.
If you, if you fired off one of those hydrants right now, it would, it would kill all the water pressure.
Yes, yes. And, and then it would, I mean, it would, it'd start off strong for about 35, 45 seconds. And then it would just drop to, you know.
How many pumps we got up through there?
We've got one pump station right there at Penho that supplies pretty much Black Knob and Big Ridge. But that pump station was not designed for fire protection. Like the pump station we put in Stone Edge, uh, I had it designed to be able to supply fire protection, you know, because why put a pump station in if you can't protect the homes? And you've got fire hydrants there because all that's going to lead to is a lawsuit somewhere, somehow.
And this extra water is coming in from Gordon County? Is it done, started, is it coming out now?
No, it's still, which we, we, we average about, uh, 300, I'm going to say 360 to 380,000 a day from Calhoun. And we're, we're paying for 400,000. So we're right there at that, you know, that minimum we have to buy. Then if we have the storage and the capacity to pump more, excuse me, we would be able to pump, you know, and then supply probably 450,000.
Is that going to increase that foot volume?
It, it will. It will, yes, yes. It increases the volume and plus, once the future development gets out there that we know is coming, then we're already ready for it, you know. And another big thing we may have to put out there, and that's what I've talked with a couple of developers and their attorneys, is it's going to have to be engineered, but I'm assuming we're going to have to have a tank and a bush pump out there in that end because of some of the elevation differences. Maybe not, but it'd be highly unlikely that we had to have a storage tape of some sort and pump to keep that in because it's so far out, you know, and the elevation changes.
Now, is that factored in to your end total number or did you leave that?
No, I left that out because I was just, that Black Knob and Big Ridge, that's just replacing all the existing lines there because it's four inch and six inch and eight inch. The tank is stored, you know, bush pump is for future development. That would have to be engineered that way we know definitely we have to have that or they say, no, we can fill out of, you know, church or tank. They may not have the forty pounds of pressure at their highest point, but that we don't have to spend three quarters of a million dollars to put a tank in the pumps, pump station over there to give them pressure. So I don't want to say we're going to have to do that because I don't want to be held liable and it not happen, you know.
No, no, I was just.
And it's often, and as much as we've been talking about it here lately, I, it's, I'm sort of, I'm not doubting myself. I'm just, I'm debating, I'm thinking about calling the engineers and, hey, just look at this track of property we're on the topo and you tell me from our model what you think, just to guess what you think we're going to have to have here. I know it's coming and that's something else we've got to talk about in the next couple of weeks for that development over there. I don't know what's going to happen a bit, but.
Yeah, it's going to be a pretty good chunk and it might be to be slowly.
Yeah, yeah. And eighty-three lots, I mean, that's a pretty good start. I mean, slow, but then I'm afraid you get these other bigger tracks. You're going to get a couple hundred here and a couple hundred here all at one time and it's just going to deplete us now. I had never really talked about this next item that's connected to Dawson County. But it's come, you know, I think about everybody we're connected to. We're connected to Calhoun, we're connected to Gilmore, we're connected, you know, Cherokee County. We're connected to everybody. And it's not just to buy water from them, it's just for emergency purposes. I don't know how close Dawson County is to us, you know, with their water system, but I'd like for that to be in some kind of talks in the near future, just to maybe tie on for that interconnectivity as emergencies.
You know, a lot of pressure coming, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder where you would even be able to tie them to them directly?
I don't know how far they got it out fifty-three. I mean, I don't even know if they've got it past to be roundabout. I'm not a hundred percent sure. It might not even be feasible. It's just something, you know, I'd like to sit down and talk with Brooke Anderson. He's over there, you know, watering over there and just see where they're at and maybe if it's in their plans to take that to us. It's just something that comes to mind when you're sitting here looking at your system at night and you can't sleep and you're riding through your system and figuring out what makes you.
Yeah, that's true.
But can we talk about decentralized systems?
We can, we can. I've got one more little project that actually just, it's been brought forth back a couple of months is Monument Road. We've been in talks with Big utilities, I know you tell this, and they just doubled their capacity up at one of their tanks right there in Monument Road. And it's just in talks. Nothing's in stone yet, but it's a good, good way for us to move forward. And it's not just about collecting or gaining new customers, but up there it's about the ISO rate and fire protection. I know several folks that live up there and talk with them and they ask me numerous occasions when we're going to get up there. Number one, that's not our service delivery area. All right, so we're in the works of talking with the CD of working some things out, but we have talked to Big Utilities Inc. And if everything gets worked out, they're willing to put a master meter right there at the base of their tank and that's tying onto that master meter and feeding Monument Road.
Just running, running across.
So that's something that, I mean, that really, that, I know all this other stuff's big, but that gets me excited because I've had so many people call and seen them have to truck water in and, you know. So especially during storms and stuff like that. I mean, the power's out up there constantly and.
Number of wells that have gone dry.
Right.
It's the way that it's, where they had to drill.
But the fire department up there is under us now, right? Reddick and Dawson.
Yes, right, yeah. And, you know, you get a water system up there and you get six or seven hydrants up there after a year or so of it being in the ground and online, that ISO rate is going to come down week to week.
I wonder what they are now. They must be a nine or ten.
I heard, I think it's a nine.
A nine, yeah, was what I believe it was. So if you run water through there with their, because they've got a full volunteer station, so they have enough staff to keep it as a full volunteer. I would imagine it would be less than half. I mean, I think you would get it in three, four range if you ran the water all the way through there. Which for the ones that signed up to tap on for meter, it would be in the long run cheaper for them to get the meter for the water than it would be to continue to pay that insurance premium.
Yeah, and that's what I was fixing to say. I mean, it is citizens, you know, myself, I mean, paying homeowners insurance. I mean, if you're not near or don't have it in that ISO rate higher, we know our insurance premiums are through the roof, but we have to have it, so.
Those darn insurance agents.
I know. So, I mean, and this is just a tentative plan. I mean, it's just a rough draft. I mean, it's just something that I've sit and thought about and seen. And if y'all see anything that needs to be added or took off, I mean, that's, that's what I want to hear. And when I went, you know, that way we can get a definite plan in place for a ten-year plan, not a five-year, but a ten-year, because projects like these, I mean, you're going to have to go get that funding and, you know. I know we're working on the water plant. To me, that's number one priority, but I've got to look at the future for our system and our county as well to serve our.
Well, we're stuck in a waiting pattern on the water plant right now, waiting on them to get to their points. So trying to, trying to move forward one project at a time while still being realistic at the same time.
Yes, yeah.
So we have our meeting with Green and what's the water company name? I can't remember.
He just sent an email about it just now. I saw his name on the phone, so.
Yeah, he said, geez, what is that? I can't even remember the company's name, man, because I'm talking about it the other day.
Yeah. Maybe Chris will find it.
Well, it's the invitation for the sending portion of the meeting that he just sent out. I was going to see. I can pull it out of the.
Anyway, Phillip, you think that's our answer to the foothills issue is that guy coming in and doing? I can't see, you know, he finally told me in that meeting that it would be, he would be looking at like a million. So I don't see enough rooftops for him, for that to justify, but I'm wondering if there was any share thing where we put any money in it and Jeff has said he's willing on that. Do you see that making it happen or do you see, how do you see that happening up there?
If we can sit down with him one-on-one and talk with him and with Gina?
Jenna.
Jenna, she's the, from what I gather, she's the A-one real estate agent up in that area and see what kind of potential, and we know the potential development anywhere. But if we can sit down and find it and he can design a system big enough to take foothills, which is not going to have to be a very big system. I mean, it's not going to be big over the long term, but if he can design one big enough for maybe potential development and give us that time or get, yeah, give Pickens that time to develop instead of a year or two. Because we know as well as anybody, it's going to take a little bit longer than a couple of years. But if somebody, a developer comes and buys that property and it's advertised with county water and sewer, they're going to jump on that sewer a lot quicker than they're going to jump on a second tank. So if we can say, okay, six years or seven years, you know, it's developed. If not, then we'll, there may be a clause. I don't want to get into legal or nothing like that, but instead of, and understand he's a business. You know, he can't sit on a billion dollars. But if he sees the potential that it's going to come in and bring a hundred sixty or a hundred, two hundred rooftops in, then he's going to jump in feet first and supply and support the whole thing a hundred percent. He doesn't said that. But if he's got a little skin to gain from Jeff, which Jeff's needing the help bad. So, I mean, Jeff's going to do whatever he can do to get it resolved. We may be able to work something out with him and let the lawyers figure, you know, figure the legal things out. I just want to do the operations part of it and they can worry about that. But if it's a private system, Miss Becky, I don't think we can put any money in towards it as a county. I may be wrong. I don't know. That's a field question.
I don't think we can, just from one conversation with Phil, but there's ways, I know that there's joint projects that have occurred, but it's, you take ownership of certain parts. Our issue or not issue, our problem with any ownership is we have nobody trained in wastewater. We have nobody that's, so once we get into that game, it's, it's like, it's like joining the gang. There's no way out. You're in it for life at that point. So you want to make sure before you jump into it that you're really prepared to be into it because you're, you're going to have to have everything in place and then you're subject to the EPD standards, EPA standards. And so we do have private systems in Pickens County. There are some that operate private systems and they've met all the criteria and they're inspected and they're run in the area. So we know it can be done. It's just a matter of making sure that, that whoever it is is taking that on. The more separate that it can be, the easier it is for us as a government entity to make sure that we don't complicate it and make it a mess. Because if we start to invest in something that's a private partnership, then we've just opened up Pandora's box for all other private partnerships as to why aren't you, why aren't you doing this in this category? So I think we just got to be careful and it's really, Phil would be the one that would help guide us a whole lot more into. And I don't know if Green, I'm pretty sure he invited him to come to that seminar.
And I think Phil, he said he wanted to come to, you know, for the advice and the legal expertise, but he also wanted to learn on all this stuff as well, as I do. But my biggest thing, like you said, if you start this, it's like a game you can't get out because it just don't affect the customers, it affects the whole department because then you've got to hire and train operators, you've got to get them certified.
Be prepared for that.
And if you get, you get a wastewater operator, you know, and it's just like the water plant. I mean, I've had, I've had another guy, one of my employees, he went and got certified. And certified water operators, even though they are class three, they make quite a bit more than just your normal Joe. So, I mean.
They've trained up somebody that you're either going to have to pay equivalent or you run the risk and you've just trained them for somebody else to take them from you and.
And so, you know, and then the bigger, the more you grow, the higher classification you got to get. And when you get a class one operator or lab analyst for just a waterside, you're looking at six figures.
So I think we'll know more after the big meeting, so.
We'll know if this is a gang we want to join or not.
Right. And, you know, I'm all about, you know, I'm all about, you know, taking care of Jeff and if we can get it be as small enough, and I know he wouldn't get his return on it and sewer is not a money bag. I mean, you're not going to make a good return unless you've got it seventy thousand strong. But if you got that big, you've got to have six or seven different wastewater plants, three different shifts, you're looking at probably twelve or fourteen employees just to run the plants. So that, on that side of it, it's going to cost you this and you're not bringing in this. So it's a.
But I think it's a good year to be listening and studying and for everybody to be learning what exactly is there. I don't, I don't disagree that having the meetings are a bad thing at all. And I think from Green's perspective, to make his job easier, if he can offer somewhere in these areas that's water and sewer available for, then from a development standpoint, it takes off. But from a, from a managing on our end of the spectrum, we've got to make sure it's all done right because, you know, there's no turning back once they put that in the ground.
Right, and then, you know, and it's the same way that we've got real estate agents and developers that is advertising lots for sale with county water. Well, they don't tell their builders or their buyers that the county water is two miles away. You know, so if we got a developer thinking that this sewer is coming in and he's advertising it with sewer and this, that, and the other, I mean, it just puts us, you know, it puts us in a, in a tight spot, so to speak, and almost puts us to where, okay, we're going to have to, you know, something's got to be done, so I try to nip that, you know, especially when folks call and say that, well, this should have county water, well, I can't help what they, you know, say. This is where we're at. And so, because I've run into that in the last year and. But.
All right. I was getting more from Phil. He's already cost us ten, ten point five million dollars. If you gave him an hour, can you imagine how it takes?
I did get the million gallon tank booster pump.
That's why I'm cutting you off right now.
I mean, I missed that one. I went right over it.
You made the mistake of giving us a handout and all I saw at the bottom was ten point five.
You shouldn't have bought me lunch, I mean.
And that's over the course of, I mean, project after project. That's not all in one, one big lump.
And that made, and I priced that high at contractor's rate and, you know, I mean, like the Hill City, we can do that in the Mollinac program. I mean, we can do all that. We can buy materials and we can do stuff like that. But there's some of them where it's going to be costly that we have to get funding. Then that's where we have to contract it out, so. Anything y'all want me to do or?
Thank you. You do a great job. Thank you.
I try. I will be on the Zoom meeting next Tuesday. I will not be here, but I'll be in South Georgia. So if you see me and my shorts sitting on the porch, don't think nothing about it. I told Green when we had our meeting not to schedule it for this week and he said, I thought you said to follow me. And he said, it's done scheduled. I said, that's fine, I can zoom. I'll be, I'll try to dress appropriate for the occasion. I may be chemmified in the dirty season or something.
He'll be in the blind with paint all over his face.
You needed to say the voice and not the picture.
You don't have to turn your camera on, so.
No.
I'm not going to say what I think she just said about you.
I think that's what she said. She's calling, she's calling the baby ugly because she does.
No, I want to see the kid face.
I got one on my side. See, I've got one on my side.
Chris, show you.
He's really.
That's the last.
She's the same person that looked at that road glimpse just a little while ago. I said, oh, look at all the hundreds.
Oh, gee, babe. But no, and it's, it may be one of those things that I don't go, but it probably, I probably won't go because it's nine o'clock, so, but I may cut it short, but I am going to be there.
We need you there.
Yes. You might hear my wife calling me to give me to do something, but.
Sending you the recording of it, but we need to make sure that the recording. All right, so we're going to break for lunch. We're going to kind of stay here because we've just got one, one quick part after that before turning. But I know Karen's just set up some sandwiches over there for after Philip, for after Philip walks out.
So you want me to walk out best or walk away with my food?